Okay.
Go ahead and record, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please. We're ready to go.
Okay, we're now recording.
Thank you. I'll call the meeting order. This is the May twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for the town of Fairfield. The first item, uh, uh, no, uh, we have, uh, who's next on the alternate list to sit for Commissioner Noonan?
That is an excellent question. Um, having ex- didn't expect it, indeed, to the best of my knowledge, and you guys can correct, I, I think it's Mr. Elliott, but, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Very good, sir.
Alright.
You were here at the last meeting, uh, uh.
No, I wasn't, but I watched it.
You watched it. Fantastic. Excellent. You will sit for Commissioner Noonan this evening.
Alright.
So the first, uh, item on our agenda are bills and communications, the meeting minutes. We have two. One for May eleventh and one for May twelfth.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion.
May eleventh?
Motion to approve by May eleventh minutes by Commissioner Francis, second by Commissioner Bremen. Any comments or questions, corrections? I didn't see anything here.
There, there's one, Mr. Chairman, that Mr. Bremen, uh, pointed out, and under the closed executive session.
Yep, that's, we'll get there. We'll get there. This is on the May, May eleven.
Correct.
Oh, May, May eleven. Very good, yep.
Under the closed executive session, the, that says no motions were made and decisions were rendered. It should say or, no motions were made or decisions were rendered in closed session.
Agreed.
So that and should be an or, and I thank Mr. Bremen for his, uh, editorial eyes.
Agreed. Okay, with that changed, then, any other questions or comments? I thought we were talking about the planning one. But thank you, Commissioner Bremen. Uh, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, raise your hand, yep. Any opposed? Abstentions? The me- the minutes as amended are adopted unanimously. Next is, um, May twelfth.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Francis moves to approve. Second by Commissioner Bremen. Thank you. Any questions, comments, corrections to this, these minutes? Nope, I agree. I didn't see anything here either. Okay, all in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Kathy. Kathy, you're in favor, yes?
I was in favor.
Yeah, thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the May twelve minutes are approved unanimously as well. The, uh, next item is, uh, new applications to recommend a public hearing. Uh, the first is forty-five Sherman Street, special permit application of forty-five Sherman Street LLC for a second-floor dormer addition for an existing commercial building in the Center Design District.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't really have anything more beyond this. Uh, it is a, uh, a small commercial building, uh, on Sherman Street that is a special permit and does require a public hearing.
Very good. Thank you. Public hearing is required. Can I have a motion? So moved, Commissioner Braun. Second by Commissioner Elliott. Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. Any further questions or comments?
Um, what business is it, please?
Um, well, it was, it's, it's in transition. It's a, it's a house. There's, there's two structures on the property. There's, there's an old house that has this uh, uh, an apartment on the second floor, office on the first floor, excuse me, and a detached garage and it was approved for conversion for office use. Uh, it was an accountant's office. I think it's transitioning to an insurance office, and they're looking to put a dormer addition on the second floor of the detached, uh, building.
Excellent, thank you.
And is it all has enough on s- off-street parking for what they want to do?
Uh, there's an existing variance in place for when it was transitioned, but, uh, otherwise, yes.
Okay, and it, does a variance go with the sale of the property?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Motion is, uh, to move it to public hearing. All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Any opposed? Well, that's unanimous, so there are no opposition. There's no, no one opposed, and there's no abstention. The item is moved to public hearing unanimously. Next is three-twenty-three Old Dam Road, special exception in coastal site plan application of Esplanade LLC pertaining to the construction of a single-family dwelling in the Flood Plain District.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a special exception by virtue of the fact that it is in a Flood Plain District off of Old Dam Road, and as such, it does require a public hearing. It's for the construction of a single-family dwelling.
Okay, very good. Public hearing is required.
It is.
Can I have a motion, please? Commissioner Braun, so moved. Thank you. Commissioner Francis, second. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Any opposed? Nobody's opposed, no abstentions? The item is moved to public hearing unanimously. Next is eight-eighty-eight, eight-ninety-eight Old Field Road, zoning compliance and coastal site plan application of eight-eighty-eight Old Field LLC pertaining to a thirteen-unit residential development pursuant to section eight-thirty-G of the Connecticut General Statutes in the residential B-zone.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this, uh, these are two side-by-side properties that each have a single-family residence, uh, just locationally. It's on the north side of Old Field Road about three lots east of, uh, South Pine Creek Road. And the proposal is for a thirteen-unit residential development, uh, under the Affordable Housing Statute.
Very good. Can I have a motion, please? So moved, Commissioner Levy, thank you. And second, Commissioner Elliott. So we have, uh, another eight-thirty-G here, residential zone. Do you know how many stories is proposed?
They are, I believe these are townhouse units with garage on three t- three stories, two occupied floors above garages for each of the units.
In a townhouse style?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, any other comments or questions, moving to public hearing? Okay, all those in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item is moved to public hearing unanimously. The next item on the agenda is, uh, old business. And we have, uh, zoning regulation amendments. The application fifteen Uncle Road LLC to amend sections twelve and twenty-eight of the zoning regulations.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I was notified, uh, late this afternoon that this application has, uh, been withdrawn by the applicant.
Very good. Um, well, we still have, uh, noticed a planning session, uh, at the end of our agenda, which is, um, uh, fortuitous, and thank, and I thank, uh, 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 staff for, for doing it that way, so that we can continue to discuss the, um, possible amendment to our regulations for the Center Design District. Uh, and, um, uh, in, 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 in an effort to consider taking action on our own accord to, uh, to amend regulations, uh, in that district, um, carrying forward the work that we did uh, over the last several years. So we'll continue to do that, even though, um, this application has been withdrawn. The next is eight-oh-one Post Road, special permit application of Samuel Gardner Architect pertaining to additions and alterations to establish a restaurant use in the diet, design commercial district.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this, uh, as I did forward a, uh, a letter to the commission earlier today, uh, this applicant has also withdrawn, uh, the application.
Very good. And we have, uh, two compliance applications left on the agenda. The first is one-oh-five Woodrow Avenue, zoning compliance application of Dr. Jessica Melman to establish a veterinary hospital in a portion of an existing commercial building in the design commercial district.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, this, this property, uh, is located in the corner of Woodrow Avenue in Kings Highway West, and you're, in the link in the agenda materials, we sent you some uh, materials with that. Uh, there's an existing two-story office building on this site and a paved parking lot that's striped for fourteen spaces. The applicant seeks to utilize, uh, the first floor of the building for veterinary hospital, which is a permitted use in the design commercial district. Parking for such a use is the same as that as a professional office, so this change of use does not require any additional parking. The applicant, however, is proposing to re-stripe their lot. The sp- as it's striped now, the, the, the lot, the spaces are, are wider than what our regulations, uh, requires a minimum, so they, they, you know, they presented a plan that they can re-stripe it to get sixteen parking spaces, so two additional beyond what exists, uh, including a very small paving condition to accommodate a handicap space. Uh, there are existing concrete sidewalks and driveway aprons, uh, that will remain, so it's really, uh, an interior use change, no exterior change to the building, to establish a veterinary use, which is listed separately as business and professional offices in the zone, but otherwise a permitted use.
Very good. Can I have a motion on the item? So moved, Commissioner Braun, and seconded by Commissioner Francis. Thank you. Mr. Went, does the application otherwise comply with our regulations?
Yes, sir, it does.
Thank you. Very good. Commissioner Braun, any comments?
There's no change. This is, this goes along with our parking requirements. They're just re-striping it. But they didn't have to have that few spaces to begin with.
Um, I'm not sure about the second part of that, but they're, they're not, um, the only thing they're doing is re-striping the lot, and it will yield two more spaces than they presently have.
Right.
But the cha-
adequate parking for the purpose.
Right, the change in use doesn't trigger in the need for any additional space.
Okay, thanks.
And, and so, and to the point, they were in compliance with parking requirements previously.
And they still will be now.
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Francis? No comments? Very good. You're on mute. I was reading your lips.
Uh, it seems that it complies with all our regulations, and that's my only concern.
Right, excellent. Commissioner Bremen?
Not that this is, uh, pertinent, but it seems to fulfill a, a need in the community for veterinary services.
Mm-hmm, very good. Commissioner Corcoran, a thumbs up? Very good. I'll note that for the record.
Kind of thumbs up on the need for veterinary services. Now, a lot of them, the practices are closed right now.
Yeah, yeah, well, kinda got hit in the pandemic with all the changes. Very good. Uh, my, my view is that the application complies with all of our regulations. It is, uh, uh, you know, permitted use in the zone. It is also serving a, uh, a needed service in the community. I agree. Okay, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand or say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? No. Very good, the compliance is approved unanimously. Next item is nine-thirty-seven Post Road, zoning compliance application of Xenoptica Corp. To convert existing second-floor office space to two residential apartments in the design commercial district.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this property is on the southerly side of the Post Road, adjacent to, uh, Midas Muffler, um, and it backs up to the westerly end of the Bob Store Plaza. This building sits back, uh, to the rear of its property with the parking, uh, out in front. It's an existing three-story building. Uh, on the ground floor, there are two existing restaurants. There's, um, sports, uh, pub on the left-hand side, and I think a Peruvian restaurant on the right-hand side. Uh, presently, the second floor are two offices, and then there are existing, uh, already, two apartments on the third floor. Uh, the application seeks to establish two, the convert basically what are office space on the second floor to two residential apartments. Uh, the apartments would be approximately a thousand and twelve-hundred feet, uh, respectively. They've matched the floor plans of the third-floor space above them. Uh, since the percentage of the residential occupancy would exceed fifty percent of the total floor area, the applicant sought and received approval for variance to allow a two-thirds, uh, residential, commercial occupancy here. There's no exterior building or site, uh, plan changes. In, there's actually a reduction in the parking count by six for the, uh, the, the two apartments occupancy versus uh, the, the office space that had preceded, um, the proposed use. Um, that is all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman. If there's any questions.
Commissioner Francis?
I, I had one question. Are the four spaces for the four apartments, or I think it was eight spaces, right, for four apartments?
Two, two per, correct.
Yeah. Are they gonna be marked?
Um, I don't believe they're marked presently. There are two existing apartments there that have been there since this building was built. Uh, I don't believe they have assigned spaces. I don't believe that's been an issue, but I, I don't know to the extent that they plan to, to mark them for these two new apartments.
Um, is seventeen parking spaces enough for the, the two restaurants?
Uh, I don't recall, frankly, whether the, when there may have been a variance, uh, the restaurants have been there for so long that they've, they've changed over certain occupancies, but I, I don't know the answer to that question, or don't recall whether there were variances granted or not.
They, they may be takeout, maybe, too. Okay, yeah, that was my only concern was that the people are gonna have spaces, but I suppose they'll be there at six AM if they're staying home that day or working from home, so. Right.
Well, the, the, um, the number of parking spaces complies with our regulations, given the usage of the, of the, the, the property, correct?
Correct. The, the present use of the property actually requires more spaces than does the proposed use. The only thing that, that this change needed relief of, of the regulations was for the percentage of residential occupancy at two-thirds of the building, which exceeds the fifty percent current limit.
Right, okay. Yeah, the, the, the letter of intent was a little, um, ambiguous about having obtained necessary waivers from the Zoning Board of Appeals for the submitted plans, so it's not really a waiver. They obtained a, a variance for the percentage of residential space.
Correct.
And, you know, taking into account the variances that were granted by ZBA, the plans otherwise comply with our regulations.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's what I thought. Okay. Other questions? Comments? Okay, seeing none. Motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Sorry?
I'm not sure we had a motion on that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I'm so sorry, and that's why, that's why we always take a motion before we begin discussion. Commissioner Francis, you raised your hand, and I said, so, but you didn't actually move.
Right, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Francis, seconded by Commissioner Bremen. Thank you very much. Alright, now there's a motion. All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Looks like everyone, thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The compliance is approved unanimously. Thank you, uh, everyone. That concludes our executive session, uh, for new matters and old business. Um, the last item on our agenda is our planning discussion. And, um, this, uh, uh, was intended to be, um, m- more of a discussion of the proposed amendments, uh, from fifteen Uncle Road, but be that as it may, they've withdrawn, so perhaps we have a little bit more flexibility, um, to consider, uh, our efforts, uh, in, in, in planning, and work we've done the last couple of years, and, um, Mr. Went, Ms. Harrigan, you were gonna present, uh, some.
Yeah, let me, I'll, I'll, I'll cue this up, uh, Mr. Chairman. When we had, a couple weeks ago, our, our, our planning discussion on the then-pending amendments, um, you know, in the aftermath of that discussion, we thought it would be beneficial, and we did send you uh, some links that we, uh, had hoped that you would look at, for those of you that were, um, on the journey with us for that planning effort and the, in the public outreach that ensued. Uh, we thought it would be beneficial to, to walk through that a little bit in, in, in realizing that there were a couple of you that weren't with us, uh, at that time, so hopefully those links for the entire planning process that we undertook were helpful to you. Uh, we have prepared a subset of that material, uh, that Emmeline is going to walk us through, um, that is pertinent to the center. I mean, obviously, there was a major focus of that TOD study was on the metro center area and the Black Rock, you know, uh, over in the Commerce Drive, but there was a substantial discussion, uh, about the center. Yeah, so we called, we called that information out separately from all of those presentations, and we thought it would be beneficial to, uh, walk through that with you, and then we can, uh, discuss the when we're done with that, um, discuss the regulatory scheme and, and how you might feel about that going forward. So with that, um, I think Emmeline's gonna share the screen and walk through a, a PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Can you guys hear me okay? Just move my mic a little closer. Um, let's see, how are we advancing? Oh, there we go. Okay, so, um, if we, if we take you back to the, um, the TOD study, one of the reasons why we chose to, to, um, hire a consultant to look at, at transit-oriented development in Fairfield is, um, I think as Jim mentioned a few meetings ago, um, a majority of Fairfield's, um, land is zoned residential. Um, and we were hearing a lot from both new commissioners at that time, as well as members of the community, um, in conjunction with some of the strategic planning work that was being done, that, you know, our residential property owners, um, expressed a desire to, uh, hopefully decrease some of the tax burden on residential property owners, hopefully incentivize some new development within our commercial corridors. Um, and so, uh, we, we kind of initiated the, the study with that understanding that um, there's not that much commercial property, and we really need to kind of position ourselves to develop it um, in context wisely, um, and, um, you know, maximize the potential that's there. So we really focused this study, although Fairfield does have three tr- train stations, um, obviously, Southport is a limited service station. It's much different in scale. Um, and so the study really focused on two areas, uh, Fairfield downtown, um, and also Fairfield metro, that these are really kind of our two biggest opportunities.
Just before you, I'm sorry, before you, before you move off of that slide, I, I just wanted to emphasize that it was understood that it was gonna take, uh, uh, unique strategies, as it says on this slide, that we weren't looking to implore the, or, uh, apply whatever strategies for the metro area to the downtown. We understood from the beginning that they were unique uh, geographies that would take, uh, different approaches, so we, so from the onset, that was part of the discussion.
Thanks, Jim. No, that's fine. And then, um, so for the, for, for each of the station areas, you know, the, the focus was a bit on what the walkability um, to certain areas were. Um, I, in some of the discussion with the Fairfield downtown station area, um, obviously, uh, the X-side site is one of the primary um, properties that will be in play, uh, in the new, in the near future, you know, now that it's, uh, finished with its environmental remediation. Um, that's kind of at the outer limits of the walk shed for, uh, most TOD planning studies, but, um, you know, from a residential perspective, a fifteen-minute walk, um, you know, home, uh, without having to kind of get in your car is actually really quite pleasant, as long as, um, the, the, um, area that you walk through is vital and exciting, uh, which we feel that, you know, a lot of Fairfield downtown is, and so you know, in terms of thinking about downtown, again, it, you know, it harkens back to, um, you know, kind of, uh, looking at the context of what's there, wanting to appropriately, um, alter our regulations to, um, support, uh, infill, uh, in the kind of ways that we would wanna see it. Though, the workshops that we held were actually really well-attended. Um, I don't know if you can see the bottom slide from uh, Penfield Pavilion, but, you know, these, these were very robustly attended meetings, very enthusiastic participants. Um, you know, there were hands-on activities, uh, looking at the maps, discussing, you know, the, the potential parcels where infill might be appropriate. Um, so this was a very robust public, uh, participation project. Um, two of our biggest meetings, the first one was held in June. Um, and, you know, what was kind of interesting is that this was really, you know, the community really kind of came together to talk about these areas, understanding that they're, uh, both important to Fairfield, but a lot of folks didn't actually live in the study areas, so, um, you know, this was kind of a Fairfield-wide uh, participation in terms of folks really being interested and wanting to engage in the conversation. Uh, folks were definitely interested in new development. I think, um, uh, people understood that mixed-use and housing, uh, would be something that would need to be added to, uh, or at least, um, incentivized to add more to both of the station areas. Uh, folks talked a lot about senior housing opportunities, also affordability, uh, wanting to, um, enhance in metro center, but also protect some of the pedestrian connectivity in downtown. Um, and then also, of course, as comes up with most projects that we talk about, traffic and parking-related concerns. Um, you know, people feel very, uh, positive that the downtown is already pretty walkable. Uh, Metro certainly had, um, has a ways to go in terms of kind of getting there. Um, but, you know, I think what we heard was that, you know, there's, uh, you know, I think the focus for downtown is how do we add to, not subtract from. Um, part of the question, I think, um, in, in doing the study was to really look at, uh, you know, I think there's this perceived notion that multifamily housing, um, it, it actually has a lot of service demands on communities. And so our consultants spent a lot of time looking at feasibility in terms of, you know, what's the tax revenue of multifamily and mixed-use developments relative to the services that they would require? And, um, you know, so they did find that multifamily housing does offer overwhelmingly positive fiscal impacts. Um, you know, I know that, uh, oftentimes, when people talk about, uh, multifamily housing, the first thing people say, oh, the school kids. Um, and study after study, um, you know, in different parts of the country, and certainly our own um, data that we get from Fairfield Public School shows that multifamily developments, um, have very low uh, student population, so, you know, they're not, it's really detached, single-family homes that contribute the lion's share of students to, uh, school districts, uh, and this is a nationwide trend. The other thing, and this, this, of course, came up, um, in metro center where, you know, we're kind of building, uh, that neighborhood, was, once you get people in, it, it attracts some of those other uses, and it helps stabilize some of those o- other retail service and office uses. Um, that there is a, um, a nexus between the two, there's a symbiotic relationship. So adding more, uh, mixed-use and more housing, um, to our downtown and our metro center areas is beneficial. There's a beneficial relationship. Um, in downtown, of course, you know, um, being very sensitive to the context of what's there, uh, I think was a focus. In terms of talking about TOD and the regulations, which is what we're kind of focusing on today, um, you know, it's, it's really kind of thinking about, well, what do you wanna see there? Um, how do you regulate the development through looking at the bulk, you know, so what's the minimumized size lot that you would like to work with? How much coverage do you wanna allow? Uh, floor area, and I know the board has already started to kind of talk about this, required setbacks, you know, do you want these structures, um, to be, um, have zero setback to each other so that you have a very consistent street edge? How far do you want them set back from the sidewalk to, um, engage the pa- pedestrian or to allow other um, uses such as outdoor dining? So these are all things, I think, that you think about when you think about, uh, walkable centers as well as transit-oriented development. The other primary focus was density. And the Transit Oriented Development Study talked about that, both in terms of what is what is a feasible project, both from a development perspective? And also, what's the density that you need in terms of unit mix? What maximizes the potential of a site? And then how do you achieve that in the height in terms of the limit of feet and the number of stories that you allow within an area? And this gets to, I think, the initial proposal that talks about that first floor and the added height in the first floor, and then the residential upper stories can be a little bit shorter. Also, parking requirements, you know, do we overpark right now based on what we require of multifamily and mixed use projects? So, you know, that was part of the discussion in terms of the center design business district and then the adjacent designed business district adjacent to that and proximity to the train station. The other part of of why we had such a strong and heavy focus on mixed use is, you know, we understand that millennials, you know, they have a stronger tendency for renting rather than owning. Part of that is based upon their own financial circumstances. So, you know, the the TOD study really talked about that in terms of the existing burden for younger people in terms of student loan debt. So that was part of the discussion. In addition, what we're finding is that, you know, presently in the United States, 59% of all US households contain just one or two persons. And in Fairfield, we skew actually a bit higher in that demographic. We have 65% in the town of Fairfield that are either single or two person households. Only 35% of Fairfield's households are are families with children. And the other thing that they did within the market study is they looked at who the potential downtown and metro center renters and buyers would be. I think Jim can add to this slide if he wants to, anecdotally, about some of the things that we've heard about the multifamily developments that have been completed. But what the market study found was that 66% of the expected renters and buyers would be younger singles and couples. You know, so again, it represents those folks without without children. 26% would be empty nesters and or retirees. And then 8% would be traditional and non traditional families. And Jim, I don't know if you want to speak to the developments that we've that have been recently been completed, what we're hearing from developers.
Well, just anecdotally, you know, I think they what we're hearing, I don't have exact numbers, but I think the feedback we're getting on who is occupying these match up pretty pretty well with these numbers, that it is younger singles, couples, folks that are downsizing, retirees, you know, divorces type of things. So what we're seeing so far without, you know, statistical numbers seems to be matching up with what the market study represented.
The other thing that they did within the market study is they talked about how many how many units Fairfield could build and still have a strong market for those units. And so in downtown, the number of units was 115 through 151 units per year. Metro Center was significantly higher because there's just generally less housing in that part of the that train station area. So, you know, they they definitely felt like there was market demand over the next five years for both stations. The key takeaways for housing was, again, that there were, there was large market potential, that we have to provide a housing alternative for our young singles and couples without children. And that in order to attract younger adults, professionals that are earlier in their career, we need to really downsize the size of units within both our downtown area and in Fairfield metro for our multifamily developments, because the smaller the unit, the less expensive the rental price. So they found a correlation with that and something that we just don't have a lot of supply of in Fairfield that could help attract that particular sector of the population. Fairfield also, based on our demographics, we have, you know, we skew a bit older and we have a relatively large empty nester retiree demand for these units as well. That's what they found in the market study. So the other thing that they did is they put together some visual examples just so that folks could kind of think about what they wanted to see in the Fairfield downtown station area. And so we include this slide that was part of one of their presentations, just to kind of, again, have folks think about when you're proposing regulations that then dictate form, what do you want to see? I know that Jim and I have talked spoken internally about, you know, if we realize that the applicant's proposal is no longer in play, but if we are still talking about some of the consultant's recommendations, which were to limit the overall height to four stories, make that first floor higher, so a 15 foot first floor. What does that mean, I think, for people's, you know, reactions to what they're seeing out for what's existing and what they'd like to see? You know, in Fairfield, we understand that the context of downtown is smaller scale in terms of overall height, number of stories. And so one of the things that we've talked about internally is, you know, is it appropriate to think about that three stories, which is a common building type? And if you think back about the kind of the the slides that Jim and I provided based on our walking tour, we do have a lot of existing three story structures in downtown that share the same building face, as it were. What we don't have yet is a lot of four story buildings. So, you know, if people felt more comfortable with that three story scenario and they wanted to think about a setback for that fourth floor, you know, those are one of those things that you can discuss through the regulations that you, you know, think about enacting to help you think about that form when it's built in context to infill. One of the last meetings we had was in September before the plan was finalized. And the our consultant did talk in detail about the market studies, what the potential for additional multifamily housing and mixed use projects were in in Fairfield, both in downtown and metro center. And, you know, obviously, people, they have a very strong relationship to Fairfield's downtown. So there was more concern, more hesitation about what's the appropriate thing for downtown versus metro center, which, you know, is a bit more of a blank slate. So, you know, we 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 hear you and we certainly think that, you know, the commission was part of those discussions for the board members who were there for those, and I think, you know, the board members heard it as well. Of course, the biggest site that we have available for redevelopment is the X side redevelopment site. And, you know, it 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 really is too far from the train station to act as a a prime TOD office location. But, you know, a mixture of uses on that site would help extend the downtown.
Just want to, before you move on, the the these next series, throughout this process, you you may recall that there were a number of potential scenarios that we were trying to have table discussions about. And again, some very detailed ones with regard to metro center. But there were three kind of scenarios that we walked through on the downtown that that these next six slides will will kind of capture.
Okay, so the the first one was X side and that redevelopment site. And, you know, one of the things that they just tried to do was just to even give you a starting place for a visual for what infilling that very large site would be. You know, do you want to break up the block? Do you want to, again, limit to no more than four stories? Does that four stories have to have a different articulation than the three stories below it? So, you know, these are all things that can be discussed in terms of revisions to the regulations. And of course, you know, our consultant did provide some initial recommendations within that adopted plan as well. The other, obviously, large piece of underutilized land is the downtown station parking lot. Obviously, this would require a public private partnership in terms of redeveloping this, but it's a very large parking lot where, you know, potentially, you know, there might be, there has the potential to be other things. So that's obviously a longer term, you know, those kinds of public private partnerships are a bit more complicated than an individual developer having rights for a private piece of property. But, you know, it is something to think about long term, even from a sustainability perspective. That's a very large piece of asphalt that, you know, is a bit of a heat island. Thankfully, when they re when they repaved it just about two years ago, they did add some pervious pavement to that, so it's less of a significant runoff issue. But, you know, it's from a land use perspective, it's a bit of wasted space. So horizontally, parking spaces can be replaced vertically, as we all know. So they included, again, a concept just to kind of act as a starting place for, you know, what could redevelopment of the station parking lot look like? And again, this wasn't to lock anything into into stone in terms of the regulations, but to really just kind of provide a starting place for thinking about what do you want to see there. The other thing that they talked about was the small scale infill development, and I think this is where the heart of the regulations and the board really needs to kind of think about what they want to see. You know, it's, there is definitely potential for, you know, some of the one story structures that may be slightly underutilized. We've certainly seen in the past, since I've been here in the last four years, we've had a couple of projects where they've added residential units to the second floor of an existing one story structure or, you know, just like the application today where they've converted upper stories to residential. But, you know, there's certainly opportunity where maybe, you know, some of these preexisting structures might have either reached the end of their lifetime or, you know, they're ready to kind of be redeveloped. And this is where looking at the, you know, again, the bulk, the density and the form within the regulations can help us define what the future of downtown Fairfield looks like. Again, they provided a visual example. This is a project that would, of course, not exceed that four stories that, you know, they had recommended in their plan. You know, again, whether or not that worth, you know, whether folks feel like, oh, that seems a bit tall, maybe you want to talk about whether a setback for that fourth floor should be something that is discussed. Again, this just provides a visual starting place to talk about what the commission feels is good infill versus what could be better infill. And, you know, the form that you want these buildings to be to look like in terms of how we can then translate that into proposed regulations. So it is clear that within the updates to the downtown central design business district, that we do need to talk about the current ratio of residential to commercial. You know, there are some strong form requirements that maybe need to be reexamined and kind of reengaged a bit to, you know, decide are those still appropriate? Do we need to revise those at all? The other thing that was really discussed too is, you know, should the central business district be expand westward or eastward in any way, shape or form? And I don't know that we really talked about this in any of the recent discussions, but whether or not there should be incentives in terms of redeveloping that allows for lower parking ratios for like, say, the first 1500 square feet of retail if you are proposing a mixed use building. So one of the discussions was whether or not, you know, in currently within the regulations, it we we do really focus on retail and consumer facing businesses on the ground floor. But I think our consultant felt like, well, you know, as long as you make it a space that is convertible to multiple things and, you know, you give it that 15 feet ceiling height, that nice visibility at the ground floor level, you make it a storefront regardless of whether it's a storefront. It provides that building owner flexibility to lease to an office if that's what the market is. But you end up with that building form that is desirable for Fairfield and is flexible. Of course, the other thing was eliminating minimum unit size. I think we discussed it in one of the previous slides that when you require 750 square feet for a one bedroom apartment, it really locks in a minimum pricing for that, which is probably higher than some of our target populations who we want to live in in our mixed use buildings. So again, decreasing the size of those units also allows for expanding into that market of folks who don't have the funds to pay, you know, whatever the going rate is for a 750 square foot one bedroom. You know, keeping in mind too, that a lot of these are single person households, whether they're young professionals, whether they're folks that are single on the other on the other end of, you know, their spectrum, whether they're divorcees. And, you know, a lot of times they might not, they might not need that space. So, you know, again, the market study circled back to, you know, the types of units that folks might be looking for, and they tended to say that they were a bit smaller. In terms of floor area ratio, our current limit allows 90% lot coverage and an FAR limit of two. Part of part of our walking tour was to kind of figure out, well, what do we have now and what do we want to see? I think for our consultant's recommendation, they they said, well, you know, there is a standard of at least 2.5 FAR within a lot of downtown areas. If you want to incentivize additional, if you want to maximize the development potential, you might want to even think about an FAR of three. So this just provides a visual example of what that means in terms of, you know, the same lot coverage and obviously that increases the number of stories on that lot. For height limits, we, you know, we've talked about this a bit in terms of what the current regulations allow, which is five stories or 50 feet, whichever is less. And we have talked about if you're going to have that flexible, higher height first story level that, you know, decreasing to four stories, but increasing your overall height would help accommodate maybe some of that building form that you would like to see as opposed to just assuming that there's a 10 foot floor plate for each for each developable floor. Again, they are recommending abolishing that minimum unit size. They are talking about increasing the FAR. And so they gave kind of three alternatives. So increase kind of your your beginning step would be increased to an FAR of 2.5. They really recommend going to three based upon, you know, that four stories 52 feet in height. And then basically to to maximize the footprint, you would have to go to a 3.6 in order to really fill all four stories. But, you know, again, from a form perspective, that may be something that the board wants to talk about if they're not comfortable with a full four stories all on the same plane. So one of the other things that they felt was that there are areas of downtown that are have are really pedestrian friendly. And then there are some areas where you do have these setback buildings. I know that one of the pictures that Jim and I took was of the the taller office building that you can see from Sherman Street. And part of the reason you can see it so well is because the Rite Aid is significantly set back. Oftentimes, in walkable pedestrian centers, you don't have minimum setback requirements, you have maximum setback requirements. So that you do have this continuous pedestrian environment where you have, you know, again, it's it's hard when you design a downtown area for cars versus people because the pedestrian walking experience becomes challenging. You have to walk further distances from storefront to storefront. So, you know, thinking about form and how we improve some of the infill opportunities. That was one of the recommendations for from the consultant. And also being more flexible as to how you provide parking, including shared parking. So, for example, expanding the radius to 1000 square feet or sorry, 1000 feet for joint parking scenarios, removing the requirement that those parcels have to be directly adjacent. Also encouraging car sharing services to locate downtown. You know, whether you provide specialized parking spaces within commercial lots. You know, one of the discussions in in planning circles right now is about the, you know, the scarcity of curb frontage, you know, both in terms of package deliveries and these car services like Uber, Lyft, et cetera, everybody's battling for a place on the curb, let alone people who want to park there. So, you know, that might be something to consider in removing that from the curb, but putting it in a place that's convenient for businesses and for mixed use environments. Jim, did you want to, did you want to still go through all of this?
Yeah, thanks, Emmeline, for the excellent job.
Just tell me when to forward.
Okay, so just with that, what what we were going to do is with with that backdrop of that whole planning effort. planning effort, we were gonna then compare, I was gonna then compare the, the plan, what, what manifested itself in a recommendation of plan on the left to the applicant's proposal, although there is no applicant proposal pending. Uh, but I think it's still, um, fruitful to talk about the proposed recommendations and how you might feel about those going forwards. So, as was prefaced, uh, our regulation currently limits uh, residential use in downtown to no more than two stories and no more than fifty percent of the floor of the building, and for all the reasons uh, that were just articulated in the study, the, the plan recommended a consideration of eliminating that fifty percent cap and the two-story cap uh, and allow still the ground story just to provide more flexibility in terms of uses if there is going to be reinvestment. Um, there was also, uh, discussion about reducing that maximum, or, I'm sorry, the minimum size from seven fifty to four fifty at the time that matched up with, uh, what we required for the accessory apartment regulation as we discussed last time. Uh, that's been eliminated, and I will say that in the, uh, the bill that's recently passed, uh, the House, there is a provision in that bill that would prohibit a regulation from having a minimum unit size that exceeds whatever the building code requires. So we may be moving towards a, uh, should, should the Senate pass the bill and it move on, we may be moving towards a scenario where, uh, we're prohibited from establishing a, a minimum unit size, but for now, um, snapshot view, the plan goal was to reduce that from, seven fifty to four fifty. So I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you want to, if I, if you want me to recap the regulation proposals, then you can go back and talk about them or talk about them each as, as we're presenting them. Um, up to you.
Uh, I think we do an, an overview of, of, of all of them first, and then we can sort of come back to it. I think that makes the most sense unless, uh,
That's, that's, that's fine. So we can go to the next slide then. Um, and as was talked about, the current five-story max, fifty, fifty feet, the recommendation was reduce that story cap to four stories, so from five stories to four, and increase the height from fifty feet to fifty-two feet. Uh, but main, you maintain a requirement that that lower floor be, the ground floor be fifteen feet in height. So basically a story height reduction, I don't think you, um, uh, and then to companion with that is to increase potential reinvestment opportunity was to ex, gives consideration to expanding the floor area ratio, which is presently capped at two, an FAR of two or two-hundred percent of the lot size. Again, an FAR is simply the, the total floor every, total floor area of a building as compared to its lot size. So right now, we have an FAR of two or two-hundred percent of the area of the lot, and the plan, uh, recommended considering, uh, three. Now, again, I talked about a range, you know, two and a half upwards, you know, two and a half minimum consideration, but the applicant in the, in the plan, the former applicant, uh, was talking about an FAR of three. Uh, next is with respect to, um, next, uh, was parking. Uh, was talking about, you know, in our, in our present TOD park regulation in Commerce Drive, we have residential requirement for one space per bedroom or one and a quarter spaces per unit. You know, the lesser of, of that in, in this plan recommended considering that for downtown, that maybe there's a areas war for residential area, we could implement that same type of parking. I will also say parenthetically that in the bill that just was recently passed by the House, but not yet by the Senate, talks about capping residential parking, uh, requirements to no more than one bedroom. I'm sorry, one space for a one-bedroom unit and no more than two parking spaces for a unit that has two or more bedrooms. Uh, in my view, I think that would really have limited applicability, uh, here, because in our TOD regs, we already, uh, require less parking than what they're requiring. The question here was whether there should be some applicability to this lesser residential standard for parking downtown. Um, the next slide is really was unique to the applicant's proposal, so I don't know that we need to go there if, uh, was, I think the next slide is with respect to setbacks, that's right? So there were some setback application or proposals in the applicant's proposal, but the, the plan did not make any specific, um, recommendations with regard to setback, but as Emily discussed, you know, it might be beneficial to talk about that as to whether you want, right now, we have a minimum ten-foot street line setback. Uh, should we consider a maximum setback in lieu of a minimum? Right now, we allow zero setback on one side, but not on the other. Uh, does it make sense in some downtown context to allow zero on both sides? Um, so that's something that we might want to consider. Um, and then whether or not our present regulations would require additional setback a- above the height of thirty feet. But if we're talking about a larger story height on the ground floor, I think you'd reach thirty feet before you got to the third floor, so maybe a consideration of increasing the, uh, point at which additional setback is required, so maybe you can have three floors on the same plane, but if you're gonna go to a fourth story, uh, then maybe then it should be setback some minimum distance to break up the massing, uh, of a building, uh, if that's something you think, uh, is important to consider. So, that was a quick run-through of, of the regulation proposals for downtown. We can go back two slides, I think, to rekindle, go back to where, so, um, so the focus really on residential is how much of a percentage of the building, right, uh, should, should we allow more than fifty percent of the area of the building in more than two stories? And a lesser unit size. That's, uh, you know, really the residential piece to this. So I don't know, I'll leave it there, and if, if you want to kind of, um, have some discussion on where folks might fall on that.
Um, yeah, good. So why don't we, uh, it'd probably be helpful to, for discussion purposes, go back to the, the videos, screen, stop screen sharing at the moment. So that I can see people, there we go. So, um, how do we feel about, um, the, the first, uh, proposal here? Um, open it up for a little, little discussion. Anyone have any comments?
Is, is that reducing the seven fifty?
So, so this is eliminating the fifty percent requirement?
The one?
It's, it's, there's three pieces to this, uh, eliminating the fifty percent cap on total occupancy of residential use and, uh, eliminating the two-story cap and, uh, a minimum unit size. Those are the, the three, the three pieces to this.
Commissioner Corcoran, then Commissioner Berman.
Do, do we have a two-to, two-story cap? I thought we were at, uh, um, fifty feet and, uh,
You are correct, that the overall height permitted in the design district is five stories fifty feet, but you're capped at no more than two floors of residential occupancy.
Right. Well, I, I think that, uh, um, that we should increase the residential part of it. I mean, we're, we're looking at denser um, housing in the, uh, TOD areas, um. I don't want to go, I wouldn't want to go a hundred percent residential, but I don't, fifty percent is just a number. I think we can, uh, increase that, and it's part of, uh, what our overall goal is.
And to increase the diversity of housing stock, and that would, that would certainly accomplish that.
And to, to increase the density in the center of town.
Still requiring commercial on the ground floor?
Yes.
And fifteen-foot, uh, fif- fifteen-foot, um, ceiling heights, uh, for the floor, floor height for the, for the ground floor at least?
I like that idea.
And Commissioner Berman?
I agree with Commissioner Corcoran. I think we're already seeing the market, uh, speaking, you know, we had, just had a compliance application where, um, the applicant saw the variance to have more than fifty percent residential on the upper floors. I think there's, uh, certainly demand for it. As long as the commercial, uh, is required on the ground floor, you're gonna, uh, preserve the character of downtown, what people like about downtown, which is that you walk between different, uh, commercial uses. Um, so I would be in favor of eliminating the fifty percent cap on residential and eliminating the requirement that no, no more than two floors be residential. In terms of, you know, the minimum, uh, apartment size, I think, you know, events may overtake us, as Mr. Wentz, uh, says, uh, in terms of, uh, not being able to regulate a minimum size, but I don't feel strongly about, um, you know, a minimum size of four fifty versus no minimum size versus some, uh, something slightly larger than four fifty.
Okay. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I'm not sure that we need, uh, to have a, uh, you know, maximum residential, as long as we have the first floor, uh, commercial with the fifteen feet. Uh, hypothetically, if it's a four-story building, you're not going to exceed seventy-five percent. So I think we can just eliminate the, uh, residential aspect as long as we limit, you know, or require that commercial and the fifteen-foot be on the first floor. Um, as far as minimum size, again, uh, you know, Hartford may address that as one who lived in a tiny, tiny apartment, uh, in Soho for two-hundred-and-ninety a month with three people uh, in nineteen-seventy-seven, um, you know, even four-fifty is good size. Uh, I think there are three of us in about that size. You know, a studio apartment, you know, uh, three hundred, three-hundred-and-fifty feet is fine, and if, uh, you know, that works for some single individuals, um, you know, I think that would be fun. So, I would eliminate, rather than even a four-fifty minimum, again, I would just, uh, I think the building code would address that in terms of, uh, access to windows and so forth, but, uh, I don't think that's somewhere we have to go in terms of the zoning.
Well, it would, but, you know, uh, we're not Soho, and I'm not so sure that that's what we aspire to be. I mean, I think that, that would be my initial reaction to that.
It's a different generation and era.
Other comments? Commissioner Francis?
Yes, I like the idea of the fifteen-foot first floor. I pretty much like the seven hundred and fifty square feet. I, I guess I could live with six or six-fifty, but I would like Fairfield to have certain standards, assuming the state will allow it. And
A minimum of seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah, and, you know, maybe the point that they're a little expensive for a single person with his first job, but that's the brand-new ones that will cost that. I mean, you can just get one that's ten, twenty years old, that it won't cost as much. Um,
Well, I think the point is there are none that are ten or twenty years old, because they're not.
Over Brick Walk, there are some that are older. In Sanford Street, there, you know, where they're go, we're proposing there, there are a couple of little houses that, there's lots of little things that we don't really know about until you really look. Um, but you're right, not, not a lot. Um, and that, the residential component, yeah, I could see two-thirds or something. That, that's a good idea, because it, it seems to be more of the demand now is housing and not office space.
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Wrong?
Um, but I, I do like setbacks.
Yeah, we'll talk about setbacks and FAR, and, you know, separately, we're trying to limit this in some organized way to talk about them individually. Commissioner Wrong?
So, the residential units are ten feet, right? The residential floors?
Are, are what, say that again now?
The, and I'm sorry, I've got two things going at the same time. I hope you can hear me. I, I'm getting feedback, but the residential floors, are they ten feet high?
Well, there's, yeah, that, so that, that, that would be a, 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 a minimum under the building code, I think, is, is ten feet.
You can, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if you may, that, you, you can't go less than that, but what we're seeing in the marketplace now is, you know, a ten-foot floor plate is what most folks are building. And it's, in, I don't know that we're dictating a, a floor height, but we're just allowing, presuming, uh, in, in the proposal that the fifty-two feet would be fifteen foot. Um, and then like, I think twelve feet between floor, you know, a ten-foot floor plate, and then there's space between, you know, structurally that takes up that space. So, we're not dictating it, we're just seeing that that's, that's generally what we're seeing in new construction is, is ten-foot floor plates, you know, floor to ceiling.
Floor to ceiling, but then you have to build in about two feet on either side, so, you know, you're looking at, uh, fifteen plus, uh, fourteen plus fourteen plus twelve, that'd be fifty-five. So, if you talk about a a, a four-story structure that has a fifteen-foot ceiling height on the ground floor for commercial, and then three floors of residential above that, each of those floors having a ten-foot ceiling height, with the space in between the floors, you're looking at an overall building height of approximately fifty-five feet. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, it's, if, if, it's, if it's a fifteen-foot ground floor and then three twelve-foot building height, you know, plates to achieve a ten-foot, you're looking at fifty-one feet. You know, what the, what the plan called for is fifty-two feet. Um, you know, the application we just saw, uh, that's no longer pending, proposed a couple of feet higher than that, but, but the plan recommends fifty-two feet.
Yeah.
So, there's no difference in terms of height than what we allow now, except that the FAR doesn't allow this, right?
Yeah, so that, that's correct. There are other self-limiting features of our regulations that prevent, um, a developer from building, a, a building that caps out at, uh, fifty feet.
And I would, yeah, I would worry about the canyon effect, you know, the light and all that. Also, um, I would al- always want to have some green space. That, that gets to the setback issue, though. But the vertical setback on the third, let's see, ground floor, second, third and fourth floor, I would like to see of the horizontal setback on those floors to make it less of a canyon effect if we were gonna do this.
So what we see, um, is that, um, you know, uh, proposals, right, where the, the building maxes out on the, on, on the height and, and everything, and then, and then they want to put a, uh, green space and a barbecue area and so forth on, on the top of the building, right, as opposed to creating some mid-level setback which could then be used for that amenity space or green space and so forth. And not adding to the overall height, which would also contain that, um, that area. Be interesting, what that would look like. I don't even, I don't know if that would be palatable.
I meant green space on the ground, actually.
Yeah, I know, I, I, that's, sorry, I, I was kind of just running with what some of you were saying. Green space on the ground, we've got, you know, most of the downtown area has no green space whatsoever. I mean, think, think about that. On, on the road in downtown, just in building after building after building, no side, no side setbacks, the buildings are directly next to each other, there's sidewalk area.
And another consideration would be what percentage of affordable housing would we require? If these are tiny units, would they be sort of de facto, but we wouldn't get credit for them? How would that, what's the optimal way that could work, so we can get credit for this? Because eight-dash-thirty-G is not going anywhere, from what I understand.
Yeah, that's, that's
Oh, it, yeah, if, if, the, the plan doesn't make a recommendation, we, we already, under our inclusionary zoning requirements, any, any proposal that has ten or more units would require ten percent of the units to be deed-restricted, uh, at eighty percent area-measured income, and those units would get credited, uh, you know, as housing equivalency unit points towards the eight-dash-thirty-G. So, we're, we're proposing to maintain that requirement that, uh, but if you've got a development of less than ten units presently, you would not be required to have any deed-restricted units.
And then my last concern is, I, it would be interesting to see sort of a schematic. I'm just remembering what Attorney Burke was saying, um, if, if you have big building If, if you have big building next to big building, next to big building, what does that do? If we make this more or less as of right or. If we uniformize these, um, more flexible. If, if we liberalize the requirements, what happens if it gets totally built out that way? What does the downtown look like? That's it.
Commissioner Berman, then Commissioner Corcoran.
Uh, s- slightly off topic, but while, uh, Commissioner Brown raised the important issue of affordability, I would be in favor of increasing the percentage. The required percentage of affordability at twelve percent, consistent with what we did in Metro, uh, when we approved the tax change.
Commissioner Corcoran?
How, about the, uh, FAR, um, I, I noticed that currently we're at ninety percent. Is there, Jim, do you know what the reasoning is for being at ninety percent?
I don't know, that's been that way for. You know, more than thirty years. I, I think some of it may be reflective of the existing conditions. That when the regulations were established, that, that a lot of our downtown buildings. Uh, the core, the post-road, a lot of it was built prior to, uh, the regulations existing. So some of that was, uh, I, I'm speculating, but I'm speculating that some of it was reflective of, of what was on the ground. At the time regulations were first developed.
So does this mean that a building cannot fill the lot?
Well, it's, it's hard to maximize every single one of these requirements. You've got a, a ninety percent lot coverage footprint, uh, and a maximum FAR total square footage. But you also have a requirement to provide onsite parking, uh, for the square footage of the occupancy that you are proposing. Or, uh, you know, we do have a provision that, uh, certain adjacent properties or properties within five hundred feet. Be able to be used to establish parking, so it may not necessarily be on the entirety of the footprint. For example, that one forty Sherman Street building, uh, has additional parking on Sherman Street on a lot. That's diagonally across the street, um, that's rarely, rarely used. Um, but, but there, uh, under the proposal. So between the requisite parking and FAR and lot coverage, it's hard to maximize. Every single one of those things. What we're looking at here is, is, is trying to consider a menu of options. To give a prospective developer a little bit more flexibility in what they can propose. But if you, you know, the more stories you add, you go to full four stories, uh, it's hard, yes, you, it's, you can't achieve. Hard to achieve a four-story building with an FAR of two, but at the same time. The more stories and the more coverage you provide, the more likely it is that you're gonna need to have some manner of structured parking, which contributes to your FAR. Or to seek some sort of off-site nearby, uh, parking, yeah, jointly with, with others.
Well, what I'm concerned about is what happens to this ten percent if it's not used for parking? I mean, say you have, uh, underground parking. Um, and as, uh, as Matt brought up a minute ago, we don't have any green space in town. And just, uh, what, what is that ten percent for? I mean, does it become an alley between buildings or is it, uh?
Well, at, at, at present, again, under new construction, you can only have a zero setback on one side. So, you know, if you look at the buildings from the aerial view, and I don't know. If we have those, uh, images, that the, the aerial, uh, images of what presently exists. But when you look at a building from the front, that looks like it may be a zero setback in the street and zero on each side. But when you get to an aerial view, there's areas in the back that may have some areas for, um.
Okay, that makes sense.
Refuge and, in, in, in alleys and, you know, in, in, um, um, service, um.
I don't know if that ten percent is the right number or not. I just have no idea. I mean.
Ten percent, what do you mean?
Well, it's, it's what's left over from the ninety.
Oh, yeah, I mean, again, that's an existing requirement that we're not proposing to modify as part of this recommendation. You certainly can consider it. What, what we're talking about is should we bump the FAR up above two? Given the fact that we allow a, a relatively generous lot coverage. Most, most of the buildings downtown have a less than ninety percent lot coverage. Because if you have surface parking, that's taking away from your building footprint. Those that have a greater than ninety percent or a hundred percent coverage even are likely, you know, buildings that were built. That, that have zero onsite parking, like, uh, you know, the, the community theater building, for example. Occupies, you know, not a hundred percent, but, but probably ninety, but has no, you know, onsite parking. It was built in the twenties before any of that was even considered.
Okay. Shall we move along to the next, uh, subject?
Yeah, um, the next piece, um, so we talked about percentage of residential occupancy. And floors of occupancy, the next piece is, you know, the height. Uh, reducing the height from five stories to four, and I think a lot of that, it sounded like. The, a lot of people were kind of combining those, uh, two, uh, as long as there was still a requirement for commercial presence. That four stories and fifty-two feet seem to be okay, then the next piece of that in, in, is the floor area ratio. Of presently at two, the plan called for three, in, you know, in the context of that, is, is three the right number? Is, 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 you know, two and a half would be the minimum recommendation or the average of downtowns. Square, the question is, do you want to, you provide a, a greater opportunity at an FAR of three? So I, I think the FAR piece would probably be the next logical step, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, very good. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, um, I would go with the FAR of three, but it's, I think it's also interrelated. Uh, to some degree with the setback, um, and I'll just talk about the, uh, you know, the, let's say that fourth floor. Um, that I think, uh, you know, if we were to maintain something like a ten-foot setback for that fourth floor. Similar to the loft apartments on Ruane Street, it has a way of breaking, breaking up that mass. So they are basically interrelated. Uh, so I would approach it that way with the, allowing the FAR of three. But then when we get the setbacks, at least, I'm talking again on the fourth floor, that we would have a setback there. To deal with the massiveness of the building.
And that setback, I think, um, would most notably be on the. Front property line, right?
Correct. Yes, that's what I envisioned.
So it's a, it's a setback.
So you're, so you're talking about a street line, uh, an additional street line setback of ten feet above the third floor level. In addition to whatever the.
Right.
First three floors may be setback.
Right.
Correct.
Commissioner Corcoran?
We're, we're not really talking about a setback though, we're talking about an FAR. So in theory, someone.
Yeah, Commissioner Levy is sug- is suggesting is that, um, the FAR of three would be contingent upon. Uh, additional setback requirements above the third floor on the street line of ten feet.
Yeah, I, I think it's fair to kind of consider those in, in jointly as, uh, if, if, if. You're not comfortable with additional FAR without the combination of additional setback. I think it makes sense to consider those, uh, in combination.
Okay, yeah, Commissioner Francis?
Emily, were there any pictures of, um, three-story? I, I was reviewing the pictures that you did last time, and everything I liked was one-eight or two. Um, FAR, were there any pictures of, um, that had the setbacks a little with over three?
I think Jim can speak to that, but I think what, what we were finding is that because there was so much surface parking. Um, for a lot of these developments, that you really didn't get to that level of FAR because they weren't utilizing. What was taking up the site was a lot of surface parking. Um, so they, they weren't getting to that level of FAR. But I think when you're talking about infill development now, you, you know, you're gonna have, um, the idea is gonna be that generally. The building's gonna be over some of the parking. You know, you might be, you might be on smaller sites. So, um, you know, your FAR, because your upper levels are covering more of the site, and you might have some of that parking below. Um, you know, you're not gonna end up with these larger surface parking lots anymore, so your FAR might go up.
See, the, one of the buildings that I liked best was Lofts and Chico's. That might be Fairfield U bookstore, might, that all be one building. I thought that was attractive. I'm not sure I'm into four stories in town, or in most of it. Since I'm used to looking at ones and twos, and that I would call a three, that, though I'm not sure it is. But it, it has the height to be a three. And I think that's about where my tastes go for the center.
So by, um, uh, I'll come back to you in a second, um. So by increasing the, uh, overall height, the number of, of floors, the additional residential units. Reduction in the square footage, um, you know, minimum size of, of a unit. Will require that, that, that will all result in increased parking requirements. That will need to be met on the site. And that's gonna result in more buildings of the type that we saw proposed at Unqua. As well as what's being built or been proposed and being built, um, in these eight thirty Gs, which is, uh, you know, uh. A building on stilts with underground, with parking on that first floor, right? Um, now we're, I guess we're requiring commercial on the first floor. But, um, you know, how do we avoid the, 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 the? How, how does, how does a developer comply with parking requirements, given the additional development? That these amendments that we're considering would permit?
That's a good question. I think, I think some of it does lead, if, if you're going to attempt to maximize at every dimension. Fourth, four stories, full FAR, full lot coverage, you would need some manner of structured parking. There's another piece of that that's not codified in, in the, um. Plan document itself, but in the planning work, there was one, one of the slides, there was suggestion that if there is structured parking. That there be a minimum depth of fronting commercial space on the ground floor. So that's the parking structure, so you're not, you don't have exposed parking at the street level. That if there is a parking structure, that at least for a certain depth from the street, that there'd be a commercial occupancy. Uh, s- uh, so that, you know, it doesn't look like a, a parking structure. You know, the, we have an enclosure requirement, but I think, um, I'd have to go back to the, uh, uh, to the slides. It was toward the back, but again, there's some discussion, there was some discussion in that planning work of, you know, having a consideration of a minimum depth. Of commercial occupancy.
Yeah.
On, on street level parking.
So does a, does a parking garage constitute, um, commercial, street level, street, you know, the first floor, floor, commercial activity?
No, we would require the commer- it, the structured parking contributes to the FAR calculation. But we don't consider that commercial occupancy. So what we would, you know, the other thing to consider is, in, in an amendment, is if you, you know, if you do have. Grade level structured parking, that it, that it has, you know, aside from the driveway entrance or exit that you might need. That there'd be street-facing commercial space to a, to a minimum depth. Uh, so that, and, and that's kind of what you saw, uh, you know, on the, on the Uncle Road project. As there was, there was.
Yeah.
From the Uncle Road perspective, there was, there were storefronts, and then behind that was, was parking.
Not, not on Sanford Street.
Correct.
Sanford, Sanford Street became the, uh, Unqua Project Development's back alley.
Correct.
Yeah, I think, uh, I, I, I see you, Commissioner Levy and Berman, I think Commissioner Corcoran had his hand up before you. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I think, uh, having a minimum depth on the commercial is important, certainly at least on one side. Cause otherwise you could have a, a ten-foot deep commercial with parking for the rest of the building on the first floor behind.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it does present the issue of, uh, how do you deal with a building which, uh, is, uh, you know, all the way through? Like, uh, the one we were looking at, which goes from Unqua all the way to Sanford. Uh, do you treat Sanford as well like a street, street, uh, line and require commercial there or not? I don't know.
I think you do, and that was one of the, my problems or problems, that was one of my observations. I, as I just characterized it, you know, the Stan- Sanford Street became fifteen Unqua LLC's back alley. Right? That's where the trashcans were, that's where the garage doors were and, and so forth. Um, and I, I think that if it is, uh, street, you know, frontage. I think it has to be treated that way. I mean, so, so it kind of, I, I mean, I, I think this is a, a, a bit of a sticky wicket. Because we are seeking to enable, um, uh, mu- much more dense. Style of development with much, many more residential units in, 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 in. Re- reducing substantially or, or eliminating a minimum size on residential units is gonna result of. You know, substantially more, n- a number of units, which are each gonna require, you know, parking. Yeah, sorry, Commissioner Berman was next.
Um, I, I mean, I shared a lot of the observations and, uh, concerns about the special permit application. For fifteen Unqua, um, and one of them was frankly, height, as I'm just talking about concerns that were expressed by members of the public. Um, I think personally, in, in terms of height, um, the, the TOD study recommendation of four stories. And fifty-two feet maximum with a fifteen-foot minimum ground floor, uh, is appropriate. In terms of FAR, I mean, it could be had for anything two-point-five or, or, you know, anything between two-point-five and three. I think that we, um, you know, we, we act prudently when we. Move incrementally toward greater density and, and, uh, more intense uses. Um, I think that the public, um, appreciates that and, uh, expects a certain degree of that. I think, for instance, when we were expanding our accessory apartment regulations. There were certain things that we could have done, you know, more, more dramatically that we decided to do incrementally instead. So I, I think there is, there's a lot to be said for moving cautiously. But also responding to what, um, the demand is. You know, for, 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 you know, greater, um, residential density in downtown. Um, no, a, a lower FAR than, the, the, the then applicant was asking for an FAR of three-point-O. Something less than three-point-O, uh, would make for a more modest structure in that space, if you're using fifteen Uncle Road as an example. The applicant was asking for, you know, um, no, no setbacks after the third floor. I think Commissioner Levy's, uh, you know, point about, uh, having a set. You know, point about, uh, having a setback, a ten-foot setback required after the fourth, third floor makes sense. Uh, and when we'll get to, get to parking, the applicant was asking for, um, you know, redu- reduction of parking to one point two five. Um, per, per household. I think. We may want to keep it at one point five for now. I think that there, there is a, you know, quite a demand for, uh, there's quite a need for parking. In downtown, especially in the center, at the very center of downtown.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Commissioner Francis?
Yeah, the, the parking. Downtown is, is, you know, we have so many restaurants and they're so busy. Come five o'clock every night, there's hardly any parking. Uh, I don't think it's as bad at lunchtime. It's, it's probably more local, um, business people using it, but boy, it's, it's bad at night. Um. And, you know, it's not our responsibility to. Provide all this housing either. I mean, as buildings age and developers want to demolish them. Maybe they'll apply for a hundred percent residential and maybe we'll approve it. Cause some of these buildings are getting old. In, in fact, the one they were talking about, fifteen Unqua is old and so is the next one up. So these things may happen of their own accord in due time, uh, tomorrow, but soon.
Com- Commissioner Brown?
So I, I get concerned if we maximize everything, we kind of lose control over. Directing character of the downtown. So the community theater could dwarf with a fifty-one foot tall building. Other parts of the downtown could as well. So that's, that's my concern. We maximize everything and also. Um, Emily, thank you. You sent me the link, but I, I can't use it while I'm doing the Zoom, I guess, but. You show us the link again, the, um, the slide that had, and explain better the FAR with the ninety percent. Coverage and then the height that's allowed. A little confused about that. And is it possible to get, or you, like you said, in real life, it doesn't really exist because of the surface parking that surrounds most of the buildings?
Are you talking about from the slideshow from this evening or from?
Like five or six different options with different, different FARs?
Okay.
Different height and could you just delve into that a little bit so I understand it a little better? So they all had ninety percent coverage?
I can talk about that a little bit. The, the, the previous slide, the, yeah, the, the, yeah, this, this slide. Presumes a maximum lot coverage of ninety percent in showing what various. Floor area ratios would be at certain stories. So if you max out at night, assuming maxing out at ninety percent coverage. A three-story building would be an F A R of two point seven and a four-story building would be an F A R of three point six. Now, within that space, you, you or within, uh, what our regulations provide for, for distance off-site. Have to still provide parking. So, um, that's why it's hard to maximize both the lot coverage. And the F A R. Uh, to, in order to get a higher, uh. F A R with a lesser coverage, you need to go higher. So again, the, the, we're talking about reducing the maximum story height from five to four. The examples that we showed in the previous slide deck in our last planning discussion. Didn't have a lot of examples of F A Rs of greater than, uh, two. Uh, number one, because the regulations don't permit it now, but, but the, the only one that we had was, uh. A, a, a five-story building, uh, and wouldn't, wouldn't be able to achieve that at a, at a four-story building. So. This was just kind of an example from the consultant's slide deck is just kind of showing that. If you assume a ninety percent coverage, this is what you would get. So if somebody's maxing out a lot coverage. And an F A R, you're not gonna be able to get a four-story building in an F A R of three in a ninety percent lot coverage. It's just, you, you just can't do it. In order to get four stories and an F A R of three, you're gonna have to have a less, a less than ninety percent lot coverage.
So even if the parking requirements are eliminated by the legislation that's going through. Presumably, we could still have some control over our development by using. Things we've always already got in our zoning regulations like FAR.
Yeah, a- absolutely. And, and, and we're not, and again, I, I don't wanna, the, the, the legislation isn't proposing to eliminate parking. It's, it's. What, what the legislation has pending is no more than one space per one bedroom unit. In two spaces for a two-bedroom unit. Um, so if you were to utilize tha- that. As a base, you know, a mix of. Development that is a mix of one and two-bedroom units would average some, you know, depending on the mix, assuming they're equal, would be one and a half spaces per unit. Which I think, uh, Commissioner Bremen was suggesting might be a reasonable, uh, number, but our T O D. We don't have a T O D overlay downtown, but for Metro Center, we already are requiring less than two spaces per unit. It's the lesser of. One space per bedroom or one and a quarter spaces per unit. Again, on the presumption that it's mixed use, there's gonna be some commercial on the peak, peak times are not necessarily gonna go inside. I just wanna go back to two things. I mean, I personally, you know, at night and there's, there's a lot of restaurant activity downtown and a lot of people there. I, I, I think it's a good thing, you know, to have a bit of congestion in your downtown, cause it's a very good sign that things are, are healthy. Um, but I just wanted to go back to that one slide, not to go to the slide, but just to reference the slide. We were talking about a minimum depth of commercial space, uh, to screen parking structures. And, and that slide recommended a twenty-foot minimum occupancy depth. So that, that's just, I just wanted to, to recap that, but. Again, yes, the, y- y- you have authority on the F A R. Uh, right now it's two. Shouldn't be more than that. We're, we're, we're talking about reducing the floor height from five to four. Uh, and again, you're not gonna be able to maximize all of those things at the same time. You, you know, something, it's, you know, there's, there's pushes and pulls. Uh, and each of those elements in more often than not, it's the minimum parking. That drives the total square footage that you can have or occupancy on a, um. But that's, that's just, uh, what we've been seeing historically.
If you maximize, if we, oh, sorry.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, if we maximized all these options for maximum flexibility, then we do lose some control. Cause everything is maximized. You can ma- you can build out to the maximum all these criteria.
You, well, you, 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 you can't. That's the point that's being made. But if you wanted to, you know, have a higher ceiling height, you could have less stories, but then you'd need less parking, so you could have more. You know, of, uh, F A R, um, you know, it's just pushes and pulls as it were. But you, you wouldn't be able to maximize every variable. Yeah, Commissioner.
Um, it seems that, uh. That what we're proposing will pack a lot of cars into underneath or underground in these buildings. I'm wondering if, uh. It should be investigating municipal parking. If we're going to increase the density that much.
Having worked in a place where they do that a lot in California, it's very expensive. So I, you know, I don't know if that's something that the town wants to take on, but it's extremely costly.
For whom? The, the town or, or the people who use the, the parking?
Um, both. So, you know, normally when they build these parking structures, they do charge a fee to park. Um, you know, it's structured. I mean, essentially, when you think about the train parking station right now, you can walk quite a significant distance. In order to have to go catch the train because. It's a very linear, uh, parking lot, right? So, um, you know, in a lot of places where they do this out west, um, you know, they bonded for this construction. Then they charge a certain amount for the parking, uh, when you park within the structure, it's by hour. Um, and it tends to be embedded within, um, you know, um, a commercial district. But it's, it's not inexpensive, it's very costly. I, I think for structured parking, what is it? Fifty thousand dollars a space? Um, so it's, it's very expensive.
Yeah, just to, if I, if I can, it is, it is kind of funny to, to see how, how willing we are to park. What would be the equivalent of three or four or more blocks away, uh, you know, on a large parking lot. Uh, at a train station, for example, or, um, you know. Back in pre-COVID when retail was humming at, at, at a mall at, at Christmas time, uh, but in a downtown scenario. I- if you're walking the very same distance, it feels like you're parking too far away from your intended target. Um, but some of you may know, some of you may not, when, when. The former Fairfield store property was redeveloped into what now is, you know, Fairfield University Bookstore, that, that development. The town entered into an agreement with the developer to kind of incentivize them to provide more parking spaces than we otherwise would have required them to have. By giving them a, the town actually leased a number of spaces from the developer. Uh, as an incentive as for a, a downtown supply of parking. So, so that development acts. As, as a lot of properties do, uh, in street parking is, is a reservoir, if you will, that, that, you know, in our downtown, because if it's. Compactness, you know, if you park at Sherman Green, i- it's not an unreasonable walk to get to a restaurant or, or store. Or if you park in that lower level behind the Fairfield University Bookstore and shop there, and if you're gonna go across the street. To another store, you're generally not moving your car. So there's a. There's a supply of parking, uh, in, in, you know, and the town has been working with the Parking Authority too, mainly on the, on the south side of the tracks. That after five o'clock, that's another reservoir of parking, uh, that's generally available. Uh, the, uh, the north side, the, the, the entirety of the commuter lot, after I believe five o'clock, you can park in without getting ticketed. Uh, yeah, you gotta come up and over the stairs to get there. It would be nice if we had a better. Up and over convenient pass-through. Uh, but there is a, a fairly large supply of parking that's within. If it were a, a, one large development, if you looked at downtown as one big, large development and how far you would typically park. Away from your intended destination at such a development, you're really not, it's, it's really not a whole lot different from downtown. It just kinda. Behaviorally seems different.
That's fair. And there's a sa- whole second story that, uh, parking structure behind the Fairfield Bookstore that. Remains virtually empty al- all the time. And that's, and, and. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I had a question for, um, for one, um. You know, looking at the parking requirements, if there is commercial on the first floor and then residential on other floors. Are the parking requirements sort of cumulative for the two or how do they interrelate? Or is there any, uh, offset considering the different needs or times between the commercial and the residential?
It's, it's a combination of all of those things. Uh, right now, our regulations say when you have multiple uses in the building. You aggregate all of those requirements and provide that number of spaces. There is a provision in the commercial parking regulation that gives the commission flexibility to reduce the residential component parking. Of a mixed-use project by up to fifty percent at your discretion, if you think that the, you know, the way that it's developed. The peak times or the commercial are not gonna coincide with, with the, the residential. There's some question about that with some case laws to whether exercising discretion within a regulation is, is legal. Uh, but, um, we've had a lot of discussion about potentially. Changing or looking at our parking regulations and do we require too much? Is it, you know, I, I personally believe that once. A facility or a site has a certain number of spaces, you don't need to keep adding those incremental spaces. You get at certain economies. Uh, of scale, uh, that ensue. But the present regulation, to answer your question directly, is a combination of all of those things. Uh, you do have discretion to reduce the residential component parking, but. I think we require a, a, a higher level of residential parking than we might necessarily need to. If we, if we reduced, uh, right now, for example, you need two or three spaces per unit, uh. Which in a downtown context, I think is probably too much. If you reduced the number of spaces per unit. Then perhaps we wouldn't need the, uh, the, the, the percentage reduction language, but you know, we can, we can. Play with that, but, but as it stands now, it's a combination of all those factors.
Thank you.
And Mr. Elliott?
So, um, Mr. White, do we have, um, a, kind of a tally of the amount of parking in that? District in that area, you know, the public parking, street parking between, you know. I, I mean, is there kind of a, if somewhere, something to go off of?
It's an excellent question. Uh, there was at one point, um, a. We know how many spaces the town controls and maintains. Um, but I don't know that we have an analysis of all the private parking lots that at certain times. Act as repositories for public parking. For example, you know, plenty of people park at Rite Aid. And go to the restaurants in the adjacent property after a certain time. I don't, I don't think that. Uh, that business is active in trying to chase people out of there or prevent people from doing that. Smaller lots, maybe not so much. Um, but I can look into that. I don't know the answer if we have a current inventory. But that's something I think that will be important to have an understanding of order of magnitude of what the parking supply is. I can tell you, there's over fifteen hundred spaces on the north side, you know, in, in the commuter parking lot that are available after five o'clock. Um, you know, between nine and five, what's the parking situation? You know, it's been a, it's been the subject of debate for as, as long as, you know, for over thirty years. Is there enough? Is there not enough? Um, uh, but is there, is, to answer your question, is there a number of spaces? Do we know that number? I, I don't know the answer to that, but it's an excellent question that we'll, we'll take a look at.
And let's not forget it's available all on weekends.
All right, I think we need to, or we should move on to the next, um.
Okay, so, um. The last, again, we talked about setbacks a little bit in the context of. The F A R, cause there was some feeling that, and I'd agree that it's kind of jointly related parking. Um, there was a, uh, some suggestion that. Am I, I've lost my page. Flipping through to find my, uh, depth of retail occupancy and I hear this, I'm sorry. So. The last recommendation in the plan was to give consideration to the same level of T O D parking. It should be, you know, one space per bedroom. Or one and a quarter spaces per unit as we do with T O D, um. You know, I don't know that we need to go that far yet, uh, as if talking about incrementally, maybe we take a look at what the result would be. If we adopted a similar provision to what the state is suggesting in terms of residential, that. You know, one per a one-bedroom unit and two per a two-bedroom unit and, uh, um. But that's just my thought, um, but that's, I'll, I'll. I'll leave, I'll leave that there. And then the only other thing on the table, so to speak, would be if we wanna talk about setbacks other than. Additional setback above a certain height, I think, uh, my reading of what I'm hearing is there's support to. Maintain or require some level of setback, uh, above, if, if you're gonna be above, uh. The third floor and, uh, and if we're gonna consider an additional F A R. There seems to be a sentiment that there needs to be built in at least ten-foot additional setback for a fourth floor. The question about, uh, the street line setback, regardless of height, should it, should it be a ten-foot minimum? Should there be a maximum? Uh, is zero okay?
Yeah, uh, and so we should talk about that. And I saw Commissioner Levy and Francis.
Yeah, um, when I think of our downtown and setbacks along the street line. Um, I sort of think of that area basically from the, uh, going to the railroad bridge where the yoga studio was. Uh, to basically the pantry as buildings which are pretty much all on the, uh, street line. And I think, uh, I mean, the one thing I don't wanna see in any of the downtown. And I think, uh, I mean, the one thing I don't wanna see in any of the downtown area is parking in front of the buildings. Um, so to my mind, you know, for that, and it might just be that for that overlay, for that area there, we would have, um, you know, basically, uh, buildings on the street line. And then other areas, uh, we might have a minimum setback with a requirement that it would only be used for either public dining, public, uh, you know, parks, uh, some sort of public use as opposed, but anything but parking in front of the buildings. Um, I, I don't wanna see something like the, uh, the development at the foot of Sasko, Hill Road there with the, the parking lot in front and the building in the back, uh, you know? Uh, so to my mind, I think we would have, uh, we'd actually encourage, you know, in terms of walkability, uh, uh, the pedestrian, you know, use of it, a zero setback, uh, for that downtown area in the center, and then a maximum setback, uh, limited to a public use.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Francis was next, and then Commissioner Bremen.
Yep.
All set?
There, uh, yeah, um, I, I would agree with that. I, I like the sidewalks, the wide sidewalks. Where Commissioner Levy was discussing is across the street, I like even better. But until those buildings age out, you can't really do anything, you know, the ones on the north side. But the south side is uh, much more desirable. And I would like a building setback. If we're even have 25, 6, 7 feet off the ground, I'd like this, the setback for the third floor, never mind the fourth floor, which I'm not sure I even like. Um, but I agree with him about the public use too. It's more gracious when you have plazas and wide sidewalks, and definitely no parking, you're right.
Commissioner Bremen?
I agree with Commissioners Levy and Francis. I think, um, you know, a zero, uh, setback, uh, against the sidewalk could be nice in creating, um, sense of, uh, streetscape. Um, and it certainly, you don't want parking in the, in the front of the property, and a maximum setback can do that. And you can require that there be some sort of public use within. If there is gonna be a setback, that there be some, you know, benches or public use there, uh, or outdoor dining. And I think the only thing that, um, we ha- have to think about is under what circumstances would we want to allow a zero setback on the side so that you could have attached properties, you know, by, by mutual agreement of the, you know, the two property owners? You have certain properties that are already attached, I guess, historically in the center of downtown, um, with the zero setback on the sides. And I don't know the extent to which we wanna allow that or, um, forbid that.
Yeah, no, there, there are some rather considerable stretches, right, of, um, area that are not, uh, the post-road, uh, between the pantry and Unqua, right? I mean, this is, this is gonna, well, and we, it doesn't have to. I mean, at some point, we should talk about a specific overlay area where perhaps we wanna, or, or, the, the, the specific area in which we would like to see these regulations adopted. Um, but yes, to the, I, I think, uh, to, to all of your points. Um, and as these buildings, you know, and the properties, uh, you know, get redeveloped and turn over, you know, that's what we'd like to see. Other comments on this, these points? Mr. Braun?
I would like to see, I agree with Meg, um, Commissioner Francis. I would like to see, um, wider sidewalks, requirement for landscaping or tree, cherry trees or something like that. Um, or opportu- the flexibility that we could require, you know, more opportunity for public space. But I agree, not for parking, other than. I worry secondarily, maybe not for tonight, about the infrastructure under the ground. It's pretty old. We need to ask engineering about this increase in density and how much capacity we have, whether it's sewer, water, pipes, underground drainage, or, uh, how far can we go with bringing to the density, um, burden on our infrastructure? Is that something we can get input?
Yeah, there, there's really, that's a twofold issue. One, one is sanitary sewer capacity, uh, in which, uh, the Water Pollution Control Authority has to approve the flows for any prospective development to, to determine whether or not they can be accommodated in the system or whether there are mitigating infrastructure improvements that one might need to make, uh, to accommodate that. So anytime there's a development or redevelopment, in a lot of cases, it comes with either a plan to upgrade certain capacities or a payment in, in lieu thereof to, uh, to, to offset the town's cost. On, on, that's on the sewer side. On, on the storm drainage side, uh, those are all evaluated independently. You know, the town, there, there is, uh, some detention capacity issues that the town has been trying to address, uh, and when there are opportunities for redevelopment to increase that, uh, storage capacity for stormwater. And, and that is independent of, you know, sanitary sewer flows. So that's, that's examined at, at, at both of those levels for any, uh, development project.
Jim, do you mind if I, if I add to that? Um, in, in terms of the, the, um, the downtown, um, recently did a, a stormwater assessment? Um, because obviously, uh, for some of you, I, I think you may experience some of the flash flooding that occurs down in that area. And part of the reason is that all of, you know, a, a large majority of the buildings in downtown were all constructed with no onsite retention. And so, you know, redevelopment of these parcels actually provides an opportunity for onsite retention that doesn't exist. So in the, uh, you know, with all of these pre-existing developments, they would just all push their water into the, into the town's stormwater system. Um, and so there was very little onsite retention. Um, that was basically what the summary of the study was. And so, you know, I think that the town's engineering department is, is hopeful that with additional redevelopment, um, and, you know, trying to, like they did with the train station, add more pervious parking, more rain gardens, they'll be able to accommodate some more of that onsite retention. But, uh, they did make the point that redevelopment of downtown provides an opportunity for onsite retention where there's none for the pre-existing older buildings now.
So, with the, with buildings with, where does it go?
Need to, Commissioner Braun, you're speaking to the mic a little bit.
Where does the onsite detention go with new development when there's no setbacks? Does it go under the building?
Under the building. Under the building. So you build, you build, uh, you know, en- engineering, uh, with, uh, you know, large, um, basins that, um, blows the water back into the ground, into the building.
Then there's regarding sewer capacity. This might not relate to what we're talking about downtown, but I know one of the bills being proposed wants to relax sewer capacity requirements so that developers could have their own sewage system, I guess? For that development? I don't know if that would relate to what we're doing downtown, but that.
No, that's, that has to do with septic systems.
I'm sorry, yeah.
That has to do with septic systems. That pro- that part of the legislative proposal had to do with septic systems and who had to review up to a certain, um, gallons per day capacity for the septic system. So, um, that, that didn't have anything to do with, um, town sewer systems?
Were they enabling like a community sewer system for a, for a, a, a development?
Those are allowed presently, community sewer systems, but the, right now, there's a gallons per day, um, capacity limitation and, and, uh, there's a threshold. So if you are, if you reach that certain threshold, and I apologize, I haven't worked in a lot of communities where we have a lot of community septic systems. But, um, my understanding is that right now, up to a certain level, you get approved by the Department of Health. If your septic system is over that capacity at a certain range, then you have to get approval through the, um, state DEP, which is a much longer process. So they were trying to increase that from, and I'm gonna make up numbers here, from 5,000 gallons per day to, and I might be talking about the wrong thing, whether it's gallons per day or, uh, gallon system, whatever. Up to 7,500 or whatever, whatever that number was so that deep, the state DPH could approve more of these as opposed to having to go to DEP where they don't have as much staffing. They're overwhelmed, they're doing other things. Um, and they find that those approvals and those reviews take a much longer period of time.
All right, okay. Okay. So we feel like we've, um, I, I, I feel like we've talked about these variables, uh, considerably here and provided some valuable feedback. Uh, Mr. Wang, do you feel like you've got enough?
I, I agree, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any other additional, um, regulatory proposals to talk about. I think this was a very healthy discussion to just kinda talk, talk about where everybody stands on this. I think I have a much better understanding of where consensus might be, where we might need to throttle back a little bit on some of these proposals.
Yes.
Um, just depends on what your, um, desire is going forward in terms of, uh, you know, timing. You know, we, again, we don't have a privately pending application now. The question is, it's now, you know, we have a plan. Um, we've discussed certain elements of it. We can formulate, uh, or draft some proposals for your consideration, you know, for, for, you know, based on this discussion, I think we can at least put, put some draft language together for your fut- future consideration.
Yeah, I, I think that would be very helpful. Um, I also think it would be helpful to see some basic, um, rendering is too strong a word, uh, of, of what the building, the streetscape would look like if the, these regulations or the, in, in general speaking, the, the regulations were amended consistent with our discussions. Um, does that make sense?
Uh, I think so. You're looking to see if there's some prototypical visual examples we can give you that, that tie into the parameters that we're talking about.
Yes, yes. And, and I, I recognize that we, uh, don't have, uh, you know, sophisticated AI computer systems to plug in to, 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 you know, renderings, you know, in the office. Um, so if there's any issues there, just, you know, let me know. But yeah, I think that would help for everybody to, to see.
Okay.
Commissioner Braun?
So if we're going into the next sort of phase of evol- evolving this, I would really like to get some feedback from Mark Barnhart, um, the impact this would have on our 8-30G criteria in terms of 12%, maybe we should require 15% if we're adding to the density. Are we getting closer to it or further away from it?
Yeah.
And also, um, I would really like to hear from the town engineer and maybe WPCA on our infrastructure capacity.
Sure. That's, those, those are excellent points. So, you know, if, if we were to redevelop the downtown area consistent with the regulations that we're talking about, increasing the capacity, uh, increasing the number of res- residential units in the manner that we are contemplating, how many units might that be? Um, and so accordingly, you know, what impact, uh, would that have? Uh, would that need, need to have on the infrastructure? And can the town infrastructure support that?
Also, as well as climate change, because I think conservation should weigh in on what, what, whatever planning we're doing for climate change and flooding and things like that.
Yeah, let me just step back for a second and just talk about overall timing on this. Is that, that we, we can start putting some of this together, but, but I just wanna step back and, and, and the reason why we had this plan adopted once we were, went through this process is this, I think we recognized that it was likely that we might see a private development application come forward at, ahead of our time schedule to implement certain portions of this, uh, regulatory, uh, scheme. And we saw that, I mean, this application has been withdrawn. Uh, but, uh, that's not to say that it, that, you know, having this discussion was beneficial should there be another application. But, um, uh, you know, it, it likely may be we might see similarly proposed regulations, but we're now in a better place to advise such an applicant, um, uh, before we are at a point where we are at the implementation stage, uh, on our own schedule. So I just wanted to.
That, that, that's all fair, and that's all fair. And, and, um, you know, uh, we, we had undertaken the TOD studies and the other reviews and the, the roundtables and everything with a view towards updating our plan of conservation and development. And having that in place as a guide for developers to use as a support for applications, um, to amend the regulations or for special permits and the like. Um, that's been, you know, delayed. Um, it doesn't mean that we can't and shouldn't consider moving forward with amendments to the regulations in the downtown area in, in, in tandem with our, you know, our update. So, you know, I don't know that we need to go get too crazy, uh, you know? With the, with the ask. Um, but, uh, I think it prudent to understand what the, oh, first of all, you've got a, 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 a basis upon which to craft some proposals, uh, to amend the regulations. Um, secondly, uh, some examples of what the streetscape would look like if the regulations were, were adopted. Thirdly, um, if they were adopted and the downtown area was redeveloped consistently, uh, how many housing units approximately, you know? What, what, I, I, obviously, we can't understand whether a developer's gonna create, uh, you know, all micro studios or two-bedroom apartments, right? And, and the like. But, you know, what, what is the potential impact to the number of dwelling units that, um, could be constructed? And to Commissioner Braun's point, you know, how does that impact our overall, um, uh, the metrics, uh, under 830G? And I think the answer to that question drives our further evaluation of how many affordable units to be requiring in this district with these regulations, such that if a developer is going to avail themselves of these, um, you know, these amendments and create three stories of residential over one story of commercial and reduce reparking requirements and so forth, you know, what percentage of those units will we require to be, you know, affordable? Um, in, in keeping with the, you know, the scheme so that we don't, uh, find ourselves taking, taking steps backwards, if you will. And I, I think, and then, you know, the question about the, the incursion on the infrastructure, I think is good from, you know, water and sewer perspective. But that having been said, if developer proposes to construct something, it's their responsibility to ensure that they can, um, fit within the existing infrastructure. And if they can't, then there need to be improvements. And oftentimes, it's the developers that are bearing the burden of those improvements, um, which is a good thing for the town. So, um, you know, I, I'm not terrible, I, you know, I, 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 I don't, I don't wanna get too far over our skis here thinking that, you know, we're gonna squelch the whole thing because we don't think we have 12-inch pipes to handle, you know, uh, water to, to, to feed, you know, redevelopment. So, yeah, I mean, that, that's kinda where my head is. That all makes sense?
It does. Um, I think we've got a good idea of what, uh, some of our next steps should be. Um, and I thought it was, uh, a beneficial discussion. I thank everybody for their thoughtful consideration.
Yeah, and thank you for all of your work. Um, so, uh, comments and thoughts before we, um, kind of circle up here. Commissioner Francis?
Uh, Mr. Corker in Hennepin wanted to speak.
Yeah, I, I saw his hand, but you, you kinda jumped in there first. What, what's on your mind?
Okay, there we go. Um, I was wondering, in the TOD study, um, the consultants predicted how many, what the demand would be for, the annual demand would be for units in the downtown area? And I'm wondering if we're keeping pace with that or above it or below it?
Yeah, our, um, that was what, 100 and something? I, I don't have that slide in front. I don't have that slide in front of me, up to a hundred and fifty units per year.
Yeah, I'm looking around for it, but that sounds right.
Rate over, you know, for the next five years. Um, we have not produced a hundred and fifty. I mean, the um, the, the three, three, three Uncle Road project is a total of ninety units is really the only sizable project downtown of residential.
That's not done.
It's coming online. I mean, the first phase is being occupied. So within the next three to, three to six months, I think you'll see that those ninety units pretty much fully occupied.
They have the eight thirty Gs.
That's a very large development, though, and there's not another one of those.
Yeah, that's, that's ninety. The eight dash thirty G on the corner of Ruane, that's thirteen, you know, thirteen units, um.
And the one by the train station.
The one by the train station, I think, is twenty, twenty-three units. So they're, 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 you know, they're they look large for their sites, but they're not a, a large number of overall, um, units. So all in uh, those three units, you know, those three combined, although they're not going to be it's longer than a one-year absorption period will be less than a hundred and fifty units all in.
And we're in the same ballpark, though, of what they predicted, at least for.
And I think we're seeing that, you know, reflected in terms of the interest that we're seeing in, in, you know, uh, the, the market study seems to be accurate because that's what the market seems to be wanting to build.
Right, okay.
Anyone else? Final comments or remarks, questions? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for, um, you know, really, uh, studying the, um, you know, the prior work and and the, uh, the proposed amendments and, um, really participating tonight. And thanks you to Mr. Wendt and Ms. Harrigan for really engaging and putting, uh, those materials together. I think, uh, you know, we're on a good path. All right? Excellent. Good night, everyone.